Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, regular meeting Monday, August 1st, 2016, General District, Loughlin Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia, 24531. We now come to oral roll call this Monday.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Hagman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Present.
Mr. Blackstock.
Mr. Barber. We're now all for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The members of the board now entertain a motion to approve these agenda.
May I make a motion to approve this? Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Barber, sent by Mr. Hagman. Any discussion? All the panelists in the House say aye. Close. We now have hearing of the citizens. Hearing of the citizens as a time that citizens in our county have come forward and let us know what's on your mind. It's not a question and answer period for the board. Just a computer and I have come forward for three minutes as an individual to speak about anything that you're concerned about or allow the board to know what you're thinking. If somebody's speaking for a group, we will allow additional time also. We have a lighting system there. Mr. Hunt will control that. So if you need further three minutes, he'll let you know. First person on the list is Donna Hudson. Hudson will come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Donna Hudson and I'm the Chief Deputy in the Treasurer's Office and I'd like to address to you this evening concerning the proposed insurance rate increases. I'll be retiring in December, so I'm here speaking on behalf of my coworkers and other county employees. The memorandum we received dated July 20th from this George stated that the county will incur a significant premium increase at nearly 15 percent effective October 1st. The more astonishing figures are the rate increase percentages that the employees will be paying. If 15 percent is considered significant increase, then the only word I can find to describe that percent increase is employees will pay is exorbitant. My rate, for example, will increase from $29.98 per pay period to $58.82 per pay period for the same plan. This is a 96.2 increase. The lowest percentage increase for all plans is 18.84 percent and it steps up significantly until it gets to the highest at 96.2. I'd like to present to you the board an example of two positions within our office. We have two positions that recent pay raise still make less than $22,000 per year. Their 2 percent raise from the county was $425. Their insurance rate increase is a minimum of $633.88 for the cheapest plan or $3,023 for the family plan. At best case scenario, they have received a $2,032 pay cut this year. They only gross $1,826 per month. The mandatory deductions from their pay click 5 percent to VSR. Then you have Social Security and Medicare. This leaves them with about $1,595 a month. If they choose any of the family insurance plans the county office offers, their monthly take home amounts are for Key Care 500, they take home $128 per month, assuming that they have zero federal and state tax liability. After Key Care 30, they take home $333 per month. After Limitless HSA, the most affordable plan with a $3,000 deductible, they can take home $405 per month. This is a question I would like for the board to take from my conversation tonight. How can anyone survive off $128 or $405 per month? Ask yourself, how many of your bills would not get paid if you only had $405.70 of disposable income to pay all of your monthly expenses? How are we going to retain or attract good employees when their salary will not support their insurance? We demand many skills and high level of professionalism. Our employees are expected to arrive and work each day on time and dress in a professional manner. We expect to demand verbal communication skills, that they be excellent, proficient, computer skills, excellent math and letter writing abilities. These employees must be trustworthy individuals. They're handling the financial resources of the county. What type of individuals are we going to attract in the future with the job listing stakes at the best they could hope to acquire at the end of the month out of insurance is $405? We're not sending the correct signal to our employees if they're valued to the county when they work hard for us all month and at the end of the month they have nothing to show for it. I'd like to request that the board give these issues a very hard look before the county spends an additional $3.2 million on an animal shelter before compensating human resources under the level of conditions. I'm not here tonight to diminish the value of any stray dog or cat, but when we place their conditions and concerns over those of our human resources, something's going terribly wrong.
Thank you. [applause] We get allowed, Mr. Hudson, official time because I feel she's speaking for a group. My next on the list is Callie Miliaskasins. Miliaskin?
Ms. Hudson, welcome to Abomination Care. Right, it's going up to...
Hi, I am Callie Miliaskin and I am also in the board, the Deputy Treasurer in the Treasurer's Office. I would first like to say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to voice my concerns about the health insurance premiums that will go in effect October the 1st, 2016. I understand that as the county's cost increases with monthly revenues, some of these costs have to be passed on to the employees. However, it appears the portion being passed on is significantly higher than the past. It really concerns me on how we can increase insurance premiums and there are many employees, including myself, that can barely make ends meet financially on what we make now. It is my concern, opinion, it is my consider opinion and hope that the cost being passed on can be reduced and revised. Thank you.
Next is Catherine East.
Good evening, Catherine East, Chatham, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of the SPCA Pennsylvania County Members, Volunteers, and Supporters, and they're all in full strength tonight pretty much. Just have a really short and simple thing to say. We feel it's the Board of Supervisors' responsibility as representatives of the people of the county to build a basic shelter for the animals, ensuring that all the people of the county are participating in this responsibility. We also feel the Community Foundation Fund should be used to raise money that was cut by the board and deemed not necessary for the initial building. We trust that the Board of Supervisors will vote to move forward, hopefully tonight, with funding and building of the shelter. Two years is a long time to wait. Let's get building. Thank you.
Mr. Bush, your fiscal.
I'm Bush Fitzgerald, Dan River District, and I come forward this evening to give you my sincere appreciation for being elected or selected to represent Pennsylvania County on the College Board of Dan River Community College. My term expired in June with the college official year and I thoroughly enjoyed it and I would like to thank each of you for supporting the college and the efforts to get our students and young people thriving, citizens in this area. So I would like to especially recognize and thank Mr. The late Mr. William Pritchett, the Honorable William Pritchett, who was chairman of the district when he was elected to serve and it was great to, and I aspire to stand up and represent Pennsylvania County as my term expired in June. Thanks, Mr. Edgerton.
[applause] Mr. Fitzgerald, I would feel bad if I didn't say something. You're a lifetime educator.
Yes, sir.
You've done so much for the students in this county. That was just one more way of serving. I don't know what else to say, but... Joanne Roberts.
I'm Joanne Roberts, I'm resident of Chatham and I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today on behalf of the new shelter. I am not a member of the SPCA, I'll make that clear, I'm a citizen of the county. I am a member, however, of the Alliance Therapy Dogs and I have a number of dogs that I have rescued from the current pound, which is not a shelter, what we have now is a pound. My dog Griff, who was featured on ABC News last week, was going to be euthanized in 15 minutes if I didn't rescue him, that's how much time I was given, to come and get that dog out. The current conditions, they're better, I will say they're better now that Mark has been hired, that we have a new director. However, the current building was cited, I know for a fact, a minimum of five times for not meeting minimum standards for animal care. As being the largest county in the state of Virginia is deplorable that this is the service that we provide to our citizens and to the animals of this county who were there because of negligence on behalf of humans' part and through no fault of their own. I was at the meeting two and a half years ago with the Chatham Middle School where a commitment was made by the current Board of Supervisors and three people, Brenda Bowman, Mr. Hagman, and Mr. Blackstock, who were on the Animal Welfare Committee at that time. A commitment was made to fund the new animal shelter and a location was chosen that was going to be visible so that we could move forward to be an adoption center as opposed to a pound that all it wanted to do was kill animals and get rid of them. I think that you, as a matter of integrity, I call you to keep that commitment. The funds were allocated and in two and a half years, progress has not been made. We have a contractor here tonight who's going to speak also with minimal changes. The existing building as land you have purchased could be adapted to be far superior to the situation that we have now. One of the primary things we need is a location where people can sit, we need meet and greet rooms where people can come. Can you imagine going to the current landfill to think about adopting a dog and the only place you can walk your dog is by the landfill that's filled with carcasses of dogs that have been euthanized on the back end of a pickup truck? We need so much and it's shameful. We are dependent now on other shelters and other communities to take up the slack because we have failed. If it weren't for them, the euthanization rate in this county would be a deplorable 94 percent as it was several years ago when the Animal Welfare League started. And through their efforts and the efforts of other caring organizations, that rate has been lowered significantly and I applaud those volunteers, people who love animals and care enough to do something about it. And I call you to task because you have failed to keep your commitment that was made to the animals of this county and the people of this county. We serve this county ourselves, we volunteer, we teach, we have many positions in this county, but we are also animal lovers and we believe that they should be treated kindly and fairly and humanely. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jim Scares from the West River District and I come to you tonight to speak as a responsible pet owner. I'm a person who owns a pet. I take care of that pet. That pet has regular vet visits, that pet has regular heartworm treatments, all of the treatment, everything that the pet needs, I take care of. What I don't understand is why the majority of the problems we face with these animals in this county are caused by irresponsible pet owners, people who let their dogs roam free that aren't fixed, they can go out and create other problems and yet I'm responsible for it as a taxpayer when I am a responsible pet owner? Well, so far y'all have spent over a million dollars on this building to build this new shelter, this dawdy Hotel Hilton. Now, I agree that the current location is substandard, but do we need a multimillion-dollar facility when we have teachers and workers in this county who can't even afford their insurance because of abomination care? My insurance is going up too. Now, in this age of abomination, where everybody should be paying their fair share, how come the SPCA and the Humane Society, whacko, who just want this building to start with, aren't paying their fair share? Majority of it is going on the taxpayer. Now, why can't they be more like the chapters up in Lynchburg that built a seven, almost a $7 million facility and not a dime of taxpayer money was spent because they got off their lazy dust and went out and worked to raise money, have fundraisers and campaign funds to raise money for that facility, almost $7 million? Fine and dandy, more to them, but I should not, as a taxpayer of this county, be forced to spend my hard-earned dollars on a facility that my pet will never have to step foot in.
Thank God. That's awesome.
Thank you.
What about the other countries?
Well, they should take care of their own animals.
Why they take care of their kids?
Okay. Remain silent.
If their kid can't take care of their animal, they shouldn't own one in the first place.
Next, the next speaker on the list is Leslie Jones.
It's not a right, it's a privilege to own the animal.
I'm the person that belongs to the county. I'm a staff member, I'm a employee of the county. I mean, I've worked at Pennsylvania County, I've worked here for five years, I'm a staff. I am the person that is below $22,000 a year and I've looked at my insurance. I have a daughter that's going to be going to college, another child at home, my husband has just lost his job, you know, attempting, so I'm going to be a person that's going to have to have a family plan. And my man says I'm going to bring home about $200 and that's overwhelming for me. I mean, all of you probably know nothing about that. You can't phantom with the feeling of that capacity. But I do ask you to think about it when you lay down on your beds at night and if you can sleep with that.
Next one, this is Matthew Stevens.
My name is Patrick Stevens from the Dan River District. And of course, a lot of y'all wouldn't think that my model would be near as noteworthy as these other people here, but anybody in the Dan River District that has a child should be concerned about the solar panels that is being proposed in my backyard because there's three schools down, the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. And all three of these schools have wells that draw their water out of the ground. The proposed solar panels have mercury and other chemicals in them, they have a 25-year lifespan, the efficiency rating's only 13 to 20 percent. And as soon as they're constructed, just like anything else, it starts to deteriorate. Also, I'm concerned by the heat generated from these solar panels. On a hot day when it's 100 degrees, a solar panel reaches temperatures 200 degrees or higher. And you have hundreds of solar panels in a row, just like a giant radiant oven is heating the area. All the trees that buffer around the schools, everything will be stripped down, graded, and it'll just be open field. There'll be no more greenery, no shade, no wind buffers, nothing to protect the ground, the erosion, nothing to stop the wind in the spring and the fall when the wind blows hard. There's also, I'd seen on the agenda here, several of the sections, 35, 141, different ones, that I'd like to bring to your attention, 56-46.1, by the Commission, Consider Environmental Economic Improvements in Service, Reliability Factors in Improvement in Construction of Electrical Utility Facilities. Subsection D, it says on the environment, environmental shall be deemed to include a meaning historic as well as a consideration of the probable effects of the line on health and safety, of health and safety of the persons in the area concerned. And so everyone that has a child that goes to these schools should be concerned, as well as the property owners around that area too. Now, I don't think all the energy is fed, don't think I'm up here, you know, just thinking of just burning fossil fuels forever. The Bible says there's a time and a place for everyone and there is a perfect place for a solar panel, but it's not in a hole, in a doughnut hole, in the middle of three schools, church, houses, you know. At any given day, there are hundreds and hundreds of people right in this one area. If you include all the teachers, all the students, and...
Speaking, please, you're out of time.
Okay. That's all I got to say about this.
All right, moving on. Senator, item six, I think each board member has a amendment to the amendments that are included of the, depending on Senator, if you have, I can, I undertake a motion to approve Senator, with the amendment.
I apologize. I apologize for interrupting. I knew there was one more person inside here to speak. Did you run out of time?
Move on, somebody else on the list. Mr. Barber, agree with your motion?
I'd like to march approved, Senator, with the amendment.
Second. For a motion, in a second. All the panelists say aye. Close. Motion carried, denunciated. Unfinished business, item seven, financial matters, library fax appropriation. Mr. Barber?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the 10-day layover has been met for appropriating $9,575.30 in library fax revenue now for its finisher. This was unbudgeted revenue. The staff recommendation is that the board amend the library's 2017 budget and appropriate $9,575.30 to Memorial Gift Fund and Mr. Chairman will lead a roll call vote following any discussion.
Okay. For the motion? Do you agree? Yes. For the roll call vote? Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Item B, expenditure refunds of June 2016.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, June expenditure refunds total of $36,382.42. The 10-day layover has been met. In following any discussion, Mr. Chairman, we will be ready for roll call vote.
Your discussion on this matter? Eric Nugent, roll call is Monday. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Motion carried. New business, item eight, Dominion Seven Presentation on the proposed county animal shelter.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at your last meeting, the board had two action items pertaining to a proposed animal shelter site. The board instructed the staff to prepare a draft agreement with the Community Foundation of Dan River region. You'll hear more about that in a few minutes in a future agenda item. It also asked for Dominion Seven staff to appear and talk about the base bids that we'll be seeing and also any proposed alternatives. Talk a little bit further about the bids, talk about a conceptual of the shelter. And here with us this evening, we have Blair Smith, who is with Dominion Seven Architects of Monmouth. Their expertise is in many areas, one of those includes designing, constructing, managing animal shelters. And Mr. Chairman, he'll answer any questions that you have for this project.
Mr. Smith, take it away.
I don't think it needs to work out with. It's rough.
It takes a minute for the lamp, is the lamp actually protected?
I can talk with most of this, I think it...
Let's try to get to the project.
Okay. Okay, while we're warming up, I can kind of give you a few introductory comments. We started this process over a year ago, came and started doing some evaluations and came back and made a preliminary presentation to you. That report was dated end of July 2015. At that point in time, we were looking at adding onto and renovating the entire building that was a car dealership down there on 29th. And that was approximately a $5.2 million project when it was all said and done. That was a little rich for your taste, which we completely understand, we probably agree with you as well on that. So we went back to the drawing boards and we worked with some folks from the county and the community to try to bring that price back down and reduce the scope. And so we came back to you in January and made some suggestions to you at that point in time and there, authorization was given for us to proceed with the filling of the documents and getting bids on the project and getting subcontractors. So that's kind of where we are to this point in time. So on July 12th of this year, we took bids on contractors and we won't talk about this tonight. So the project in general is right where we thought it was going to be back in January and it's approximately $12,000 square feet, a little bit less. Six of that is the addition and the remaining $5,800 is the renovation to the existing building. One of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that in the future, we could expand into that existing building. So everything we've done right now will allow us to expand in the future if the need arises. So that's a very important feature. One of the things I wanted to mention to you is this really is a turnkey job with the exception of some furniture that you may put in the offices and any IT systems that need to be installed in the building to have it operate as you live in the office. So this is the, this is the drawing that shows the addition on the front, which is the long vertical element and we're renovating back to one of the service bays as we briefly talked about. One of the things that we were asked to go ahead and include at this point in time, we see some brown area in the bottom there and those are some fenced areas for the dogs to exercise and so that was included in this project. Additionally, when we met with you in January, the price did not include installing a roof on the back half of that building and that probably seems a foolish thing to do, so we should be prepared to do it now and down the road. do, uh, so we took it for you to do it now and down the road, so we included that in the pricing as well. Um, the project also includes, uh, the work around the site, like we had talked about. Uh, one of the things that had been mentioned in one of the previous meetings was to have appropriate vets that, uh, circle the entire property. And what that means for you is that on both the, uh, the south side of the building and the north side, there is a, uh, motorized gate that will allow vehicles, the county staff, to get to the rear of the building. Uh, you're still using that as a, um, a penal lot, I guess, so, uh, the, uh, the sheriff would probably like that as well. All right, so this is, uh, how we're expecting that building to look. You're seeing here the addition, um, and in the rear, this is the existing building. So you may ask, well, what are we doing to the, the backside of that building? And it does need to be kind of cleaned up a little bit, so as part of the base bid, which we'll be talking about what that is in a little bit, this whole area in the back will get painted, uh, and then, as I mentioned, we'll get a new roof on the top. So we also, in order to try to give you some flexibility, um, in terms of how the numbers came in, there, there are five additive alternates. Um, the first is the spade neuter clinic, we were asked to put that in. Uh, the second was a small addition, uh, that was a real life room, a visitation room for the dogs. Um, we also said, well, would it be nice at this point in time, instead of painting the, the back of that existing building, to actually put a new veneer on it that would match the front? Uh, we also got some suggestions about putting a livestock shelter in the back near the impound lot, and we also, uh, got requested to add some acrostical panels to, to help with the, the dog walking in those dog kennels, and we split that out as well. Uh, so that's kind of where, uh, sort of the base bid and those five alternates.
Mr. Smith? Interrupting you because I know a lot of the board members are, are interested, because we are, uh, into some fundraising activities. During the construction process, how many of these alternates, uh, that are listed could be put on hold? I know a lot of times, you know, um, I've been involved in building jails or several places, and I know that you need to include things at certain stages. Are any of these items that are listed as alternatives, could they be moved to the back of the, uh, schedule, uh, in order to see if we could raise the money?
Yeah, so example, this is the, this is the new addition, this is what we're renovating, this portion here. So, and this area here is a side court, it's a drive-through side court for the animal control officers. The first additive alternate was a spade neuter clinic, and it goes right here. Okay? So we have a wall that separates it from the, the main, uh, part of the building. This frankly could be added after construction, for that matter. The second addition is a, uh, is a dog real life room and a visitation room in this corner here. That probably would be most effective to be done, to make that decision sooner, because we have new veneers here and here, and kind of loop in, so that would be one you'd want to do early. Um, the third one was adding a veneer, uh, on this piece right here versus painting it. Um, that could be done anytime, it would be more... Let me, I'll address the schedule, I'll come back to costs in a minute. Uh, the livestock shelter is just sitting out here in no man's land, uh, so that could be done anytime if you want to. And then the acrostical panels really should be done as part of the, the actual work, because you're in there doing that work. So as we think about those, um, in terms of schedule, if you decided later on down the road, midway through construction, to do that, that number one, the spade neuter clinic, you may pay some premium for any inflation. Okay? That real life, the number two one there, if you're, have a mason on site, and he goes away because he's done, and you gotta bring him back, you're gonna pay even more premium. Does that make sense? So some of these, if you stagger them, as far as making the decision whether you want to do them or not, sooner would be better, but some of these other ones, that number one is, is frankly part, it's all inside works, it's not a big deal. Does that help you?
Yeah, what you're saying is, one, we can put on hold, we could put livestock shelter on hold because that's outside of the main program.
Three could be put on hold. Two is, two is the challenging one.
Okay.
But I'd want, I'd want that decision sooner than later. If I was in your shoes.
Number two and number five.
But, yeah, the five. Yep. The five's not a big dollar now, so, uh, if you're gonna do the project, making that decision should be... So anyway, bids were taken on July twelfth, there were four bidders. Uh, Blair Construction was a low bid, and that is no relationship with me, I, my name's Blair, of course I am, not last name. There's no collusion going on there. Um, the low bid was about two percent higher than our estimate, uh, there's some reasons for that. Um, the, I was, I had some contractors in my office today and doing a different project that they just did, and they were talking about how busy the subcontractors have gotten. In fact, the guy who's providing, uh, rebar for the concrete walls and the slabs in that job, he's having to outsource stuff because he's so busy. So we got to the point that I was hoping we weren't, but we're starting to see some construction inflation because people are busy. We got a very, very competitive, uh, uh, number of calendar days, the contractors provided this number. So you can see here, their construction time on their bid form is two-hundred-and-fifty-two days, that's eight and a half months. Uh, we were thinking originally it was like two, uh, ten months to do this job. So, uh, one reason they are probably is lower in price is because they have, they can do it in less calendar days. Okay? So the base bid came in at three-point-one-four-nine, uh, bid, um, alternative number one was the spade neuter clinic, about two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, the second one, which is the real life room and the visitation room is eighty-three, uh, the veneer is a hundred-and-twenty-nine, the livestock shelter, it's a lot to that, it's a lot more to that than what it may sound like as eighty-four, and then the acrostical wall panels are eleven thousand. I will mention that in that base bid, we talked about trying to have a turnkey job for you, and what we like to avoid is, you get this building built, and then you gotta turn a bunch of stuff in so that it can, you know, be run. And so that three-million-dollar number there includes about three-hundred-thousand dollars of animal equipment, so that's the kennels and the cages and things like that. You have to have a narcotics safe, you have to have an examination table, things like that, and they're expensive items. It includes all the appliances in the building. So you will have the washer and dryer to clean some things in, in the shelter, you will have, you know, a refrigerator for the staff to use, all those things are included. Uh, so that's very important. The other thing that number includes is about sixty-nine thousand dollars worth of allowances. Some may say, well, when the rule's an allowance. Um, we did an allowance for you to have an exterior sign. We haven't designed it, but it's, it's in the project, and we can kind of decide what that's gonna be down the road. The State Vet has, um, already looked at the drawings, they had some comments, one of their, a number one comment's on the floors, and so sometimes we have to go back and make them, I, I, it sounds crazy, that it, have to make them not as, um, as grainy, and so they want them smoother, um, and so we have an allowance in there, if we have to go back and do a second coat on that epoxy floor, so we're trying to protect you there. Uh, your power company is gonna charge you something to bring in new, uh, electrical service to this building, and we also have some interior signage that we have an allowance for. So all of these things are included in that, uh, base bid price that you're seeing there. Uh, so with that in mind, our recommendation at this point in time would be to go with Blair Construction and do the base bid and additive alternative number five for a lump sum amount of three-million-one-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So with that, um, I can conclude my report, I'll answer any questions that show me.
Can you ask questions?
Mr. Smith? Excellent presentation. The board members, uh, if you have any questions, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman?
Eric?
It, uh, just looking at the figures that, that people up there, so even if we do the reductions that, that we were talking about, or the alternates, it still leaves this three-million dollars, is it correct?
I bet, uh, the base bid is for the basic project, and that to do upgrades is additional money.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith, one of the things you mentioned in, um, your FFAV, your furniture, especially as an equipment line item, how much more furniture do you think will be required? When you talk about a turnkey job, I'm thinking that when I look into an office, you don't have desk in there and so forth, I realize you can't price computers and things of that nature, but with the FFAV, how much furniture, uh, do you have in that base bid?
Okay, there, the furniture that you would have to provide, there's a, there's a break room here that has a table for your staff to sit around and have lunch, we're talking about a table there. There, uh, there's four chairs for the animal control officers to use, there's a private office here and here, so that would be a desk and a chair, and any side chairs you may want. Uh, there, there's some furniture in this lobby. The reception desk is all built in case work like what you're sitting behind, that's part of the project. So you're talk, really talking about, uh, a table, four chairs, a complete office setup in two locations, and some chairs, whatever you have in that lobby. So it's really not much. You know, a lot of, um, a lot of office companies like, you know, GE or, you know, a bank, whatever, they would allocate maybe four-hundred dollars, five-hundred dollars for an office setup for all the furniture in that. So you're talking about eight-hundred dollars, four chairs, a whole lot of, that's more there. So it's just, it's not gonna be a big number that you could have it set up.
Any other questions? Mr. Warren, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing else to add at this time, other than the fact of, um, the Board has been considering this project for a while, put a considerable amount of effort into acquiring the property, paying the E and D fees for Dominion Seven, and, um, I do commend Mr. Smith, um, and his staff for the good job they've done for the county. As far as going forward, uh, Mr. Chairman, it would be per the direction of the Board, but, uh, the next step, if you want to consider moving forward with the project, we would need to bring you, uh, back as an agenda item to actually award the bid to the apparent voter bidder, which would be Blair Construction. As you know, per the county's purchasing policy, uh, that exceeds the magic number that the staff has authority to do, so when you're ready to consider that, that would be your next step to actually move the project forward.
And I didn't check where I came, uh, those bids are good for either forty-five or sixty days, so...
Forty-five.
It's forty-five, yeah, so that will be not quite the end of the month.
So if we, if we scheduled a vote to, uh, reward the bid on, uh, at the adjourned meeting, would we need to require them?
Yes, sir. Per the, uh, purchasing guidelines, uh, that would actually give the authorization to award the bid to Blair Construction, would have two action items, possibly three for you, if that, if that's the Board's desire. One would be to award the bid, uh, the second one would be to start the ten-day layover for the appropriation, and then the third one, if it doesn't happen this evening, would be for your agreement with the Community Foundation to act as the fiscal agent. Those would be the next three motions that I consider that the Board needs to make.
Would be the consensus of the Board to, uh, actually vote on the award you bid at the adjourned meeting to give us some power? Kind of like, you know, or something from the other.
Could I ask, uh, Mr. Warren, just one question?
Chad?
Mr. Warren, we've talked about donations and so forth, which we all know that's gonna make a big difference in, in, in the fact, if, whether this goes or doesn't go. So did we come up with an estimate, estimate of what, uh, what you're estimating, uh, donations or such like, come forward?
Mr. Chairman, the answer to that is, uh, no. Um, I talked to staff members, um, I talked to Ms. Dodson, uh, we kind of analyzed this thing, we even talked to Mr. Smith about it, and trying to determine what we may get, and really, we have no idea. I do know there's some donors out there, just wait and see what the county does, that are ready to write some checks to fund some of the things above and beyond the base bid. Uh, don't know exactly what those specific projects or intentions are right now, but to answer your question, Mr. Hagelmann, um, I'd be afraid to wager a nest.
I think just based on our experience, they're waiting on you. Um, somebody's helping you with a check or make a significant donation to something that may not happen. You know, you might try to be ugly, but that's just kind of the reality of the situation. So, you know, this is a county-owned facility, uh, Lynchburg was mentioned earlier tonight, that is a, the Humane Society owns that, but the city of Lynchburg gave a lump sum amount to that and is paying annually for the care of those animals, so they work both ways. And it, in both cases, whether it's the Humane Society in Lynchburg or the, or the county-owned facility, and you're looking for funds, it takes action by the locality to make it happen.
So basically, the, uh, our citizens are waiting on us and, uh, and we're waiting on their donations.
Check it in there.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
We don't need a vote on the schedule after the next meeting?
My consensus, uh, we would not need a formal vote to continue bringing these components forward, just interaction from the Board.
Earlier this evening, in fact, the Board met at five o'clock, and, uh, most of us didn't have none of it because we met until six forty-five, and we're still over here to get to the Board meeting. Uh, we did discuss with our county administrator, uh, the, the entire Board, with the exception of Mr. Barter, our chairman was not here tonight, we were all there, but we directed our, the committee directed Mr. Warren to get with Ms. Dodson and the Community Foundation and finalize the agreement. Uh, there's a couple items we wanted to, uh, to discuss with the Foundation, Ms. Dodson, before we actually inked the deal. We're looking forward to, uh, raising money for the Community Foundation. Anything further, Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir.
Anything for any of the Board members?
Thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Blair? Smith? Thank you. And by the way, I want to point out, I've been, uh, involved in a lot of building projects in my career, and you, the estimate was three-point-two million dollars, and you come in within fifty thousand dollars and did pretty good.
Done well.
I'm gonna dig that, too.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to item nine, lottery for localities, Board package, forty-six point seven.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, various localities, primarily in Washington, Virginia, North Carolina, Florida, have requested legislation for the next session of the Virginia General Assembly that would allocate five percent from the lottery payout, and that money would be returned back to the locality where the sales for those lottery tickets were generated. And, uh, I emphasize that in the legislation they've requested, this would not come from proportion here for education, so it would be from the lottery payout, is what this five percent would be. In your Board packet, page forty-one, there is a letter written to the state legislators for the localities you see there, Ottawa County, Blackstone Town, uh, Town of Parkhold, and also Cleveland, Virginia, addressed to Senator Frank Robb and Delegate Topsey Wright, Jr. And in that, elected officials from those localities have laid out their case and their request on the General Assembly. This is brought to you for your considerations. Uh, you cannot act on it, you can vote it up, you can throw it down. Uh, Delegate Marshall said that he would try his best to attend the meeting this evening if he could, to answer any questions you may have, I'm just looking around to see if Delegate Marshall has bated to the meeting. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks, this is something that, uh, you could be a partner in, and request several legislation for some.
Any, uh, comments from Board members, any, any motions? I think it, uh, something we definitely would be interested in, if we could borrow five percent, what we spend here in county on, uh, on lottery, actually, when reading this, it's five percent, we'll take five percent away from the winner's pool, which would make it away from education, so I think it's something we definitely would be interested in, it would be a way to, uh, raise some revenue, maybe eat back on some taxes here in county. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, would it be possible to have this, uh, additional agenda, uh, agenda item at the next meeting to give us time to actually talk about things?
I think it should, uh, absolutely would be good. I think it should absolutely be there.
Yes, sir. As the board's desire, we will place it on the agenda next meeting for continued discussion and consideration.
Would it be something we would need a resolution? Would it be a factor in the board?
I think it would carry more weight from the locality. It would be obvious that the locality is requesting and not one board member or individual board members. It would show that this is a more directive initiative.
So I don't want to make a motion that we direct the staff to draw the resolution for consideration of the board?
I'm happy to make that motion, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to talk to our state representatives and perform a vote.
Motion on the floor, about seven?
Second.
Second by Mr. Skares. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposition? Motion for. Item 10, new business, Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Service Performance Contract for fiscal year 2017-18, forty-seven through fifty-three, board packet.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Viva, the executive director of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Community Services Board, sent this item in for the board's consideration. He is here to discuss approval or considerations of performance agreement. This is a report packet in very short version. This is a huge contract amendment. So we did provide it between civil citizens and also the board in due that its entirety. One thing that I like that Mr. Viva's staff provided for the board's consideration is an executive summary of changes in performance agreement between the next period and the period that we're operating under at this time. Mr. Viva is here to answer any questions that you may have. And, Mr. Chairman, the staff does recommend that the board approve this 2017-2018 performance contract and authorize the county administrator to execute any required documents.
Mr. Viva, anything you want to add?
No, sir. We appreciate your support. We're able to utilize this contract to pull down nearly $8 million from the state in funding for our services this year. We matched that with nearly $900,000 in locals coming from the city, from counties, doing high matching to result in nearly $20 million worth of funds for the state to have an alternative substitution. We're very appreciative of your support.
We appreciate your job. Very, just mental health, very important issue. I don't think there was a connection.
That's a quick one to take.
As a former jail administrator, I can assure you that jails are running over with mentally ill people that do not at all. Mr. Chairman, I believe that we approved DPCS, FY 2017-2018 Performance Contract and
authorized the county administrator to sign all necessary documentation.
Motion on the floor, about second. Second by Mr. Barber, any discussion? Hearing any discussion? All in favor, say. Do we need a roll call, Mr.?
Roll call?
Yes. Roll call, Mr. Monday. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagelmann?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Skares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 11, recommendations from the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee met today, as I mentioned earlier, at 5:00 p.m. And I don't think we really had any formal recommendations. Mr. Monday, if you want to add a couple of things before I?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I could do is maybe try to paraphrase a motion that Mr. Warren brought before the board. He may be better suited to read that in its entirety. But I'll defer to the committee, and I'll be glad to give any complaints that are outstanding.
One of the, one of the issues before the Finance Committee today at 5:00 was the merchant's capital tax. And we do have some businesses in the county that we feel need some, we need to take some action post haste. And Mr. Warren made a motion in the committee itself. Do you have that motion over, Mr. Warren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I made the motion that we instruct staff to take a look at the capital, merchant's capital tax effective with bills due June 30th, 2016. The current assessment rate will remain at 30% of original cost times the $2.75 rate be applied from dollar one through one billion. The assessment of the original cost will decrease to 10% at one million and $1 through 5 billion. The assessed value will decrease to 5% of the original cost at 5 billion and $1 and be applied to all remaining inventory. The value of $2.75 will apply at all assessed percentages. I second. That was the motion I made, Mr. Chairman.
So we basically made the motion just so the public can know that we are working on the merchant's capital taxes, on the issues that we have with businesses in the county that have been calling. And we also, as part of our agenda today, discussed the current rates of our personal property tax, motorhomes and camps. And we are going to have additional meetings to discuss that tax rate, what we can do to address some issues with that. The other discussion is concerning, I don't know if you showed any real ideas against those earlier. Anything else, and anybody else would like to add? Okay. Moving to item 12, access agreement for the army, item on page 55 to 58, the packet.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the Channel Armory, as we all know, has been decommissioned. The board directed the staff to express its interest to the state that the county is interested in obtaining the property at no cost. That was done many months ago. We still do not have a specific answer from the state at this time. For your consideration this evening, there is an access agreement. This would be in writing between the Virginia Department of Military Affairs and the county. And its purpose is exclusively to allow the county to enter the property, to further inspect the premises, and to conduct any reasonable testing or analysis. And that way, if we do hear an answer back in the affirmative from the state, that they will transfer the facility for the county's use and due consideration, the board will be more informed and able to say yes or no as to the acceptance of that property. And the staff does recommend approving the armory access agreement that has been vetted by the county attorney, Aiden Seale, as to the term. And Mr. Hunt, you have full of the continent electrical focus agreement.
This is a win for the county. This allows us to basically make sure that if we are gifted something, it's not a treasure horse, that it does not have any negative things as far as soil testing, inspection, surveys. This allows us to get our function rolling. So when they make a decision, we can.
There's no timeframe on this, and there's no cost for this, this agreement. Let's get a motion on the floor for discussion if we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, we make a motion. We execute the army access agreement.
A motion to execute the army access agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Monday, $9 million insurance is, is that just, do we have an estimate of what that may cost?
Mr. Chairman, we believe that the terms specified in the agreement, the county has what I call layered insurance. We feel that that's a sufficient amount. It would not require us to go out and secure an additional policy. But I do agree with Mr. Hagelmann, that is an amount higher than what I expected. But I don't think we have any new costs because of that requirement.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Call for a vote. Will you roll call him in?
Yes.
Roll call, Mr. Monday. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagelmann?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Skares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Moving on to item 13. I'm actually the vice chair of the board, acting in Mr. Barstow's absence. I'm chairman tonight. But on this particular agenda item, I do have a contract of interest because this contract is a Blue Ridge Regional Jail authority. I'm the former administrator there in the power of several years, and I have contracts in place with a food service provider and a inmate help provider providing services to that facility. So I will step in, file appropriate paperwork with the clerk. And Mr. Monday, if you would come forward and take over the gavel. Is that covered, Mr. Hunt?
Yes. Since he has a personal interest, 2.231112A1 requires him to fill out a disqualification form and file it with a deputy clerk. He has done so. Mr. Monday, because the chairman and vice chairman are not able to participate in this, he's just going to lead the board into electing a chairman pro temp under Robert's orders. That's a fancy way of just saying temporary chairman. This temporary chairman will only serve for this one item, and then Mr. Blackstock will take the gavel again for the next item and all the remaining items.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. And members of the board, you heard the report by the county attorney and also Mr. Blackstock's declaration. My purpose is to have you to solicit nominations for a temporary chairman that would handle only item number 13 as specified on your agenda this evening. So the gavel will be basically extended to whoever you elect for only this one agenda item. Following the discussion and any potential action the board takes, the gavel will be then transferred back to Mr. Blackstock, who serves in capacity as the chairman for the other agenda items. At this time, I will open the floor for any nominations for a temporary chairman of the board for item number 13.
Mr. Monday, I make a motion. Do we nominate Bob Warren for this chair at this temporary time?
Second.
If Mr. Davis nominates Mr. Warren to act as a temporary chairman for item number 13, that's been seconded by Mr. Barber, are there any other nominations for temporary chairman? Are there any other nominations for temporary chairman? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor?
So move, second.
Have a motion and a second to close the floor. We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor for Mr. Warren to serve as a temporary chairman, raise your right hand. Okay, any opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. Warren, you have the gavel for item number 13.
Item 13, inmate housing, Blue Ridge Regional Jail contract. It is on page 59 through 69. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It is time for the county to renew its agreement to house some of the county's inmates. Currently, that arrangement is with the Blue Ridge Regional Jail. The sheriff has negotiated an agreement with the Blue Ridge Regional Jail at rates that are less than our current rate. Our sheriff, Taylor, has been working with the purchasing department. They have been very thorough in their efforts to make sure the purchasing policies have been followed. And I will commend the sheriff for his negotiating skills. He has rates and benefits that are more favorable to the county than under the current terms. And I thought we had a very good deal before, but we have a better deal with the negotiated agreement that we have for your consideration this evening. The staff does believe that this agreement represents fair and reasonable pricing. It is for a five-year term contingent upon annual review by both parties. The staff does recommend awarding the contract for these services to the Blue Ridge Regional Jail and authorizing the sheriff to execute the agreement. And, Mr. Chairman, the sheriff is here if you have any questions or need any additional information.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion when we award the contract to Blue Ridge Regional Jail and authorize the sheriff to execute this agreement, commend him on his negotiating skills.
Mr. Barber, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. And? Any discussion? Any questions of the sheriff?
Yes. Attorney. Sure. Thank you for coming tonight. One of, one of the first things that I saw when, when I was looking over this agenda, and that was the fact of $3,750 for prescriptions for our inmates. Is, is that reasonable? And, Mr. Monday, perhaps you might want to jump in there too. Does that seem reasonable?
Well, considering we spend about $65,000 a year on prescription medications for the inmates, and Tim Trent, the director there at Blue Ridge, was very instrumental in, in the negotiations in reducing our prescriptions cost. And from those talks, it was agreed that the Blue Ridge would assume about $3,700 a month in those prescription costs for us, which I thought was a very amenable and a very good negotiating point and a good sales point. So we were, we were very happy with that, with those terms.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Anyone else have any questions?
I did want to say one thing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Sheriff, for a good job. Job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Sheriff David, just before you leave, based on the calculations that I've done, it looks like we're going to save approximately almost $100,000 on this. So I'd like to compliment you on your efforts of negotiating this. And also, from the board, to tell you how much we appreciate you and your deputies. And we know you're serving in very trying times right now with everything that's going on nationally. As a board, I know for each man, because we've had discussions about it, we appreciate your service and we're behind you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Sheriff, how much was the total settlement I was reading that came in two thousand one thousand? Was it $100,000?
Well, over a five-year period, it would be about half a million.
Okay. So it's about $100 per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just, I missed.
Thank you.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, the way we got that this far was, you know, it's basically a 10% reduction on that $546,000 we spent. And then it's $45,000 savings in that.
Prescriptions.
Prescriptions.
That's what I was reading.
Yeah.
Sorry, I won't pay the attention.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Any more discussions? Any more questions? If not, I'll invade the recommendation. We got a roll call. I'll invade the recommendation. Raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Blackstock, keep somebody in that seat.
Like what happened to Governor McDonald, I have nothing to say concerning that matter. Can you get back over here on my, end of the right page here? Item 14, bid award, Pennsylvania County landfill raw roll off truck, page 70 and 71 in the board packet. Mr. Monday?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. An invitation for bid went out for the county to receive bids for a garbage truck. This is something that was anticipated, and the expenditure for this project was built into the fiscal budget. Bids were opened on July 20th. Five responses were received by the county. A summary of those bids is on page 71 in the spreadsheet. Excel Truck Group is the apparent lower bidder. The staff does recommend
through seventy-six in the package. Mr. Mundy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At prior warning, the staff was directed to work with the staff of the Community Foundation of the Dan River Region to negotiate an agreement for the foundation to serve as a fiscal agent to receive any charitable contributions for an animal shelter. A draft agreement has been provided to you on pages seventy-three through seventy-five, with their fee schedule provided on page seventy-six of your board package. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go back to those that were not in attendance at the finance committee meeting that happened at the five o'clock hour around six-thirty this evening, I believe it was. The board had a couple of questions that they wanted me to ask Ms. Dodson. I took note of what those are, and I believe it was the intention of the finance committee for me to ask those questions and to place this item on your next agenda. If that's the desire of the board supervisors, I shall move as directed.
Mr. Mundy, and based on attendance of all the board members who are present tonight, I think we direct you to do that. Ms. Dodson, I see you in the audience. We're very excited as a board to ink the final details of this agreement, get started in raising funds for an animal shelter. I think it's something that we will be all proud of here in Pennsylvania County as much needed, and it's... I heard someone say earlier tonight that we have been dragging our feet, been working very hard over the last twelve to eighteen months to get bid documents together, hired a mission seven, I commend his staff for what they've done, and I'm excited about doing that, raising peace and working with the community foundation. Okay, moving right along. V-DOT Smart Scale Project Applications, pages seventy-seven through eighty-two in the package. Mr. Mundy?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sides has been our go-to person on this project, and he will go over what he needs from the board for staff direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mundy. I hope that the executive summary that was included in your package gave you sufficient background information, but just to hit the highlights, this is a series of applications with V-DOT that we did last year for the very first time, as referred to then as HB2 for House Bill Two. As you may know, each year, legislation starts all over again, so they needed to rename it. It's now referred to as the Smart Scale Program. The Smart Scale process starts today, actually, begins August first. And as you recall, these are projects that localities submit through V-DOT. They are rated and ranked based on congestion relief, economic impacts, environmental impacts, a number of criteria that's indicated in your board package tonight of the draft gag. Based on the work session that V-DOT had back in May and some other discussions that we had with V-DOT staff, you see in the package today three projects that it looks like we've narrowed down to move forward. The very first step in the process is for the county to issue a notice of intent, and that notifies V-DOT that we intend to apply for these three projects. V-DOT has a lot to do with this process as well. There's a lot of planning that they need to do, there's a lot of cost estimates. So in order to be considered, they need to be notified early on, about August the fifteenth. So as you see in the package, the proposed projects are Ward Road Improvements, which is Route 640, northern part of the county, intersection improvements at Dayton Road, Route Forty, McBride Lane in Towne, Breton, and then the Berry Hill Road Widening, which is now Route 311. I briefly mentioned for the Berry Hill Widening that in our last cycle, which was the first round of HB2, the county submitted two projects, the Climax Road Widening and the Roundabout in Conestelle, and the West Piedmont Metropolitan Planning Organization, Danville City Council and Danville and the county together, West Piedmont applied for the Berry Hill Road Widening. The project wasn't approved in the last cycle, so it can be resubmitted. They have... V-DOT has made some changes to the system that the NPO is no longer eligible for both pots of money. There's a district-wide grant process, and then there's a high priority project process. The high priority projects means you're competing with everything in the state of Virginia. You're competing with Northern Virginia directly. So it was V-DOT's recommendation that if there is a likelihood of Berry Hill Road Widening project being approved, that it's more likely to come from Pennsylvania County. So we are talking with the NPO about some potential other projects, but it certainly their recommendation that if we want to improve the chances, then we ought to submit it as a county project. So as you see in your package, these are just the projects that we intended to notify V-DOT, and at this point, there will be formal votes, there'll be a resolution, there'll be a formal approval of an application. I'm open to whatever you choose to do tonight, but I really just need consensus to go forward with these projects.
Like we've discussed these projects in the past, one of the things I'm most proud of, we always hear about the board being split, last year and this year, these projects have been all over the county, from one end to the other, and I think that's a sign of us working together. These are major projects. The Ward Road Projects in my district on the very northern end of county, Berry Hill Projects on the opposite end, and then the Dayton McBride Drive is in Mr. Hagman's district. We also had the Climax Project last year, so I think this is a sign of us working together. I'm excited about this.
I might also point out, for the public's sake, that these are... This excludes projects like paving durable roads and regular rural addition type projects. So if someone they think, why isn't my road being paved on this list, that's not the other one. That's only six years ago.
I see. Well, of course, Greg, hasn't Oak Pond already widened through up the point that they're up there? It would like to meet from where it turns into Oak Pond, and then widen already.
Well, I think there are some improvements on the North Carolina side.
Well, how do you tell the difference when you get there? They must be done there, and they're waiting on us.
So we want to rise to the occasion to see what North Carolina is doing.
Actually, I'm glad Mr. Barber brought that up, Greg, because I was up here a few days back too, and I was amazed at, you know, where it goes, and it really looked good, so it doesn't look like they've...
Well, we think that helps the life of the everybody who is involved in that progress for...
I may want to ask, is the Pretty Fun Play Drive and Special Make Ride Lane is... Is that... Or do you have any information as they go on there, or... There was a question.
Well, the project would be included in our applications that are actually due in September. So if we notify the Virginia Department of Transportation that this is a project we intend to submit, then they'll start the process of doing their preliminary design work, doing cost estimates, and right now, we don't have the details of that project. We just know that the conceptual needs to be done.
Thank you. I think what you need is just a consensus of the board, of these three projects to move forward and be submitted, and they all start gathering documentation.
That's right.
Everybody okay with that? Mr. Warren, Mr. Davis, Skiers, Mr. Hagman, Mr. Barber? You okay with Rebecca?
Yes, sir.
I think you have your consensus. Item seventeen, expenses for refunds for July two thousand sixteen, pages eighty-four through eighty-six. Mr. Mundy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The expenditure refunds for July equal four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-two cents. Just looking at the board package here, I think it says in here that it requires a roll call vote. This one here would not have a motion and a second yet, to my knowledge, so we would need, Mr. Chairman, to start a ten-day layover where we would need a motion and a second and replace the...
I don't think this should... Because this doesn't mean to trigger all the ten-day layoffs. It's under the trigger.
Mr. Mundy, if I could jump in, that's what it is. The reason why it doesn't is because the trigger is five thousand.
That's right. We under five thousand.
So we could just go with a roll call vote on that thing?
Yes. I want to entertain a motion to approve the reappropriation of four thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-two cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Hagman. Since it's under the five thousand dollar limit, we can vote Mr. Knight. Any further discussion? Roll call, roll call vote.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Skiers?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Item eighteen, two thousand sixteen, year-end budget amendments, pages eighty-seven through ninety-one in the package.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, each year, the finance staff brings to you year-end budget transfers and appropriations to ensure there's balance with the expenses and also to budget any unbudgeted revenues. A lot of this is housekeeping in nature. Pages eighty-eight through ninety-one, there are some explanations, including a letter from Dr. Jones, the school superintendent, in greater detail from him as to what his requests are, and also others from various county departments. I will walk you through a couple of these things in your board package. Page eighty-eight is the letter that I mentioned from the school superintendent. You notice these are FY two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen action items is what they are. You have regular transfers among the categories, and also there's an amendment to the school nutrition budget. On page eighty-nine is a further breakdown of the spreadsheet of requests from the school superintendent. You notice this is a DRF grant, other miscellaneous grants, and also it would be a carryover that was already approved by the board supervisors from last year into the current fiscal year that just ended. And then you see seventy-one thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and eighty cents is the additional appropriation for the school nutrition budget. And then the other pages in your board package would be various county departments, including the sheriff, and one for animal control and one for capital allocation. I'd like to talk very briefly about the one for animal control and non-departmental. You heard Mr. Smith say earlier that there would be some very nominal things that we would probably have to consider further for the animal shelter if you vote to good war with that, including some office furniture, could be some things for IT needs, and frankly, there could be some unanticipated expenses that we have in those. Ms. Vanderhaide and I talked a lot about giving the board some opportunities and make some decisions later if we need to. We've identified two sources of revenue that could help you with that. One would be from animal control, the unexpendited funds that they have available now. Those could be transferred from the operating budget into the capital improvements fund, Fund Three Ten, and also another thirty thousand dollars that was left over in a capital line item that the board supervisors had in humber last fiscal year that may could be used to help offset additional expenses as well. Again, both of the two that I just summarized could go into capital fund that could be used per the board's discretion later if deemed appropriate, and others would be state-restricted seizure fund, sheriff, the landfill, and the two that I mentioned from the schools. And, Mr. Chairman, those are given to you as housekeeping as a state of the board. Due to the amount in this being a total of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six eighty-eight, eighty-five, those are funds either that were unanticipated or were already budgeted for expenditure to start with. Due to that amount being what it is, we would need a motion, a second, and a ten-day layover. Ms. Vanderhaide is here, if you have any further questions.
Okay. Information for the motions on page eighty-seven in the package. I want to take a motion for the appropriation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to reappropriate the adjustments mentioned on page eighty-seven totaling three hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion. Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion?
It's ten days later.
Ten days later. That beats the five thousand dollar trigger, doesn't it?
Sure does.
All right. Moving right along, item nineteen, request for public hearing amendment to the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance to include solar energy facilities, pages ninety-two through ninety-six.
Mr. Chairman, that'd be Mr. Sides. Mr. Sides, important.
Yes, thank you. If you recall, the board requested that staff look into the process of how we could best regulate solar farms and solar energy facilities in Pennsylvania County. Staff reported back to the legislative committee after doing research into what other localities have done in Virginia and looked at some examples, some state guides, and came back with a proposal to regulate the solar energy facilities through the special use permit requirements within the zoning ordinance. So we propose that that be an additional section to the zoning ordinance under the supplementary regulation section. There was some discussion about that, and as I indicated at the time, all of the regulatory rights that we have to the Commonwealth of Virginia and what I found in other examples has been included in this draft ordinance. And again, just to remind you all, by being in the zoning ordinance, it means that they would not be able to obtain any building permits or any other type of construction permits until they went through that process. So that was what was discussed, and at that meeting, I think it was indicated that you were interested in the next step to start talking about the planning, about public hearing process. So if, in fact, the board does choose to go through the zoning ordinance amendment route, then the standard procedure is that the board would refer the proposed amendment to the planning commission and ask the planning commission to hold their public hearing and report back to the board with their recommendations. So that would be the next step in the process. I've included some language to that effect that we refer back to the planning commission and ask them to make a recommendation.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the chairman of that legislative committee. I'll make the motion, we refer the proposed amendment to the planning commission with a request to review and schedule a public hearing and report its recommendation to the board.
Any other motion on the board?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barber. Any further discussion? I would just like to... Mr. Stevens, I know you're in the audience tonight, but other people are concerned about this too. This is an effort by the board, who are a legislative committee, to address solar farms, solar energy farms that may not locate the county and us have the ability to regulate them, so this is the first step. We need to get something in place. So we've worked on it post haste when this came up. Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second on the board. All in favor, soon to file a approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Mr. Mundy? Thank you, Mr. Sides. Item twenty, bathrooms at the middle schools parks, ninety-seven through ninety-eight. Mr. Mundy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Last but certainly not least, the staff continues its work installing four playgrounds at each of the county's middle schools. Bids were solicited for installing one specific portion of this project...
Motion by Mr. Warren, second by Mr. Walberg. Any further discussion?
It's ten-day layover.
Ten-day layover. That means a five thousand is not a trigger, is it?
Sure.
All right. Moving right along, item nineteen, municipal public hearing amendment to the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance to include solar energy facilities, pages ninety-two through ninety-six.
Mr. Chairman, that'd be Mr. Sides.
Mr. Sides, report.
Yes, thank you. If you recall, the, the board requested that staff look into the process of how to gas regulate solar farms and solar energy facilities in Pennsylvania County. Staff reported back to the legislative committee after doing research into what other localities have done in Virginia and looked at some examples, some state guides, and came back with a proposal to regulate the solar energy facilities through the special use permit requirements within the zoning ordinance. So we propose that be an additional section to the zoning ordinance under the supplementary regulation section. There was some discussion about that, and as I indicated at the time, all of the regulatory rights that we have through the Congress of Virginia and what I found in other examples has been included in this draft ordinance. And again, just to, just to remind you all, by being in the zoning ordinance, it means that they would not be able to obtain any building permits or any other type of construction permits until they went through that process. So that was what was discussed, and at that meeting, I think it was indicated that you were interested in the next step to start talking about the planning, about public hearing process. So if in fact the board does choose to go through the zoning ordinance amendment route, then the standard procedure is that the board would refer the proposed amendment to the planning commission and ask the planning commission hold their public hearing and report back to the board with their recommendations. So that would be the next step in the process. I've included some language to that effect, that we refer back to the planning commission and ask them to make a recommendation.
Okay. I'll undertake a motion for board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the chairman of that legislative committee. I'll make the motion, we'd refer the proposed amendment to the planning commission with a request to review and schedule a public hearing and report its recommendation to the board.
Motion on the board?
Second.
Second by Mr. Walberg. Any further discussion? I would just like to, Mr. Stevens, I know you're in the audience tonight, but other people are concerned about this too. This is an effort by the board, who are a legislative committee, to address solar farms, solar energy farms, that may not locate a county that has the ability to regulate them. So this is the first step, we need to get something in place. So we've worked on it post haste when this came up. Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second on the board. All in favor, signal by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Put your hands up, Mr. Mundy. Thank you, Mr. Sides. Item twenty, bathrooms at the middle schools parks, ninety-seven through ninety-eight. Mr. Mundy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, last but certainly not least, the staff continues its work installing four playgrounds at each of the county's middle schools. Bids were solicited for installing one specific portion of this project to be in the restrooms. The lowest bid is five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from quality construction. The bid is substantially greater than the available funds that are allocated for this purpose. So therefore, it will be necessary for the staff to examine the scope of work that was highlighted when the bids went out, and/or to also look for any auxiliary funding that could be obtained, whether it be through contributions, grants, donations, whatever. The staff will have to go back to the drawing board on it. Being this is the case, following the guidelines of the state code, also the county's procurement policy, there's a mismatch between the available funds and the low bid that we have. We will say we think the bids are in line with the type of work. We can get into the detail, it's probably necessary to do the restrooms the right way. So the staff recommends, Mr. Chairman, that the board supervisors should reject all bids related hereto due to the unavailability of the funds allocated for this project, and record the appropriate documentation and permanent file as required by the Virginia Code.
Motion by Mr. Walberg?
Second.
Second by Mr. Davis. Discussion? If Mundy's not there, we can't do it. All right, no further discussion? All in favor, signal by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Put your hands up, Mr. Mundy. Moving towards the end of our agenda tonight, report from board members, I'll saw, you, Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to take a moment to also echo your sentiments earlier. Mr. Fitz, Mr. Fitzgerald, we really appreciate your service. You've done a lot of things besides just serving on the DCC board, but we really appreciate all your efforts. And, Mr. Chairman, I did hear loud and clear tonight from my employees, I'm sorry they're not still here, this is always kind of a problem and a deep concern when we hear our employees speak as they did tonight. And what happens a lot of times, and I'm sure Mr. Mundy's already been sharing this with some, but when you get an increase of fifteen percent, that's on the total amount that is paid for those insurance premiums. So if we remain the same in how much we're paying, then that fifteen percent tacked over there. So it looks like they're paying a lot more as they did compared to their, their costs, but it was actually a fifteen percent cost on the total premium which was passed on. So, you know, we did hear you, and I'm sorry it happened, we can't control those costs, unfortunately, Anthony controlled those, so in this particular case, the insurance company. So, you know, I do hear it, and I certainly have a lot of heartburn over this issue and this decision, and a lot of concerns about the impact it has on our employees. So we did hear you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fitzgerald, I echo those comments he just made, thank you for your service, and your husband as well. Mr. Sides, I want to thank you for your work. It was Mr. Mike Taylor, which I've already talked about. However, I do have a gut feeling, and I do not feel comfortable about these premiums, healthcare premiums, and I was hoping that there's a possibility that there would be some open dialogue in the future, that that could be undertaken, and those are my feelings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Have another question? Thank you. Mr. Haggel?
I'm really pretty polite tonight, but I'm certainly glad that the finance committee heard some cries for help on the legends. So I appreciate that, and thank you, gentlemen. You did a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Walberg.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, when, when the last meeting, when we went over this, I knew this was coming, I've been on the floor maybe long with us, I knew it was going to be a hardship, that's why I asked you questions, I did. What I would like to see us do is I'd like to request, Bob, are you the chairman of personnel?
Yes.
I would, I would like for you to have a personnel meeting before the next meeting, let's discuss this and see if there's any possibilities. I know with the segments, we say in the Blue Ridge, maybe there's something we can do there, because somebody brought up that response, I'm all for the dogs, but, you know, it kind of looks bad when you're building a three million dollar facility and the employees can't even make ends meet. I mean, that, that just hit home to me. I would like to at least look at it. And also add a personnel issue, which may be in closed session, I know I spoke to Mr. Blackstock, the same one you talked about, probably needs to be addressed, we get a lot of calls, if we could, if your request.
Maybe y'all work together and call the personnel meeting.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be very happy to call a personnel committee meeting, but if we're going to get into the numbers of it, I'd also like to ask our finance chairman to maybe put it on his next agenda too, so we can discuss it there, because that's really not in our purview as far as the, the number part of it. So let's also take it back on, I know they're going to be having another meeting, so maybe we can have that as part of that agenda also.
Okay, Mr. Finance Chairman, I agree with you. We put that on finance end, that's where you're going to have it. We still need to have a personnel.
Sure.
I get to do anything for me, I'll talk to Mr. Mundy. It's a personnel issue we need to discuss.
Okay.
The, I'd just like to say, and we talked to Mr. Walberg there, who were out back in the county from great state of Alaska earlier today, and I'm happy to say that he's, he's back safely, and I was looking forward to sending him his seat to next meeting, and it won't bother me at all. Actually, it's an honor to serve in the capacity as chairman tonight. I like, I think we need to publicly commend again the Minions Southern for their efforts in coming in, we, I closely come in on the estimate, the bid at three, three million one hundred and fifty thousand base bid, and their estimate is three billion, two hundred thousand dollars. It's almost unheard of, as you know that, it's been around a long time. A lot of things are going on in our country today. I ask that you all remember our leaders, both parties and whoever else. We are a great country, and the government starts at the localities, and I think whatever the national news, news media says, or anyone else, we as Americans can overcome that, no matter what. We always have and we always will. With that said, I'll pass the, that's an honor to you, Mr. Hunt.
I have nothing.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes, sir. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.